Okay, good evening everyone. Today is Monday, March 20th, 2017. It's 5:30, we're opening the Board of Selectmen's meeting. We're starting a little bit early because we've got a lot of stuff on the agenda tonight. And I'd like to, everybody stand, we'll have a pledge allegiance to the flag before the meeting gets rolling. My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you. We've got a lot on the agenda tonight. Anybody recording the meeting?
I am.
Ally Galls, myself, Paul Sadek.
And Free Cam.
Free Cam, okay. And present tonight for the Board are Selectmen Robert Jones, Selectwoman Lisa Pacchico, myself, Paul Sadek, Jack Healy, Ally Galls, our Administrative Assistant, Jack is our town Administrator. Public discussion. I'm going to bore you for about three or four minutes here because tonight is my last meeting as a member of the Board of Selectmen, and this is my last scheduled meeting. And I'd like to thank the people of Free Town for giving me the opportunity to serve them as Selectmen for six years. As you know, I decided not to run for reelection, but I certainly have had the privilege to work with a great Board of Selectmen, the current Selectmen here and prior Selectmen Lee Baumgartner. It's just been a lot of fun, a lot of hard work, and I don't think people really realize the amount of work that goes into being a Selectman. Town Administrator Jack Healy, and of course, the one that takes the brunt of all this is Ally Galls, who is our Administrative Assistant. She not only has the Selectmen after her all the time, but she's got Jack after her all the time. But anyway, I don't know how many people know, but this, I have six years as Selectmen, served 17 years as a Town Treasurer for Free Town, and 35 years as a Reserve Police Officer in town. And I will continue to fill out my obligation as a Water Commissioner, as an elected Water Commissioner. You know, Free Town's, in my opinion, is a great town, and I've been here for 43 years, and certainly the people that live, that work in the Town Hall, if you go down to Town Hall, we've just got good people working there, the assessors, the tax collector, and the Treasurer, the Town Clerk, the Water Department, building and health, planning, and especially accounting. I gotta say that because she's sitting right there.
I thought I was going to be overlooked.
You know, you gotta look around town, and you gotta look at the Police Department, bunch of good guys that are always there when the need arises, a fire department, just absolutely great, the Highway Department, have you ever seen roads in a town that look like Oz after a snowstorm? We've got the best roads around, and you know, and we have a very limited crew as far as employees go. And the transfer station, you go to the transfer station, and it does not look like a dump, and it isn't a dump, they keep it up pretty well. So, you know, I feel very happy that I was part of the town operation, and I think the town runs very smoothly. And you know, you gotta look at your Board of Selectmen and give them credit for what they've done, and you know, you gotta support them all the time. One other thing, I don't want to forget any, I'm trying not to forget anybody, but you know, you get elected and appointed Boards, a lot of townspeople that knew, don't really realize that we run on a town meeting type government, all the decisions are made at the annual, a special town meeting. So you've got Boards like the Conservation Commission, the Zoning Boards, the Zoning Board of Appeals, Planning Board, School Committee, Parade and Fireworks, Soil Board, and the list just continues to go on. Listen, I wish my successor very good luck, whoever that person may be. I will help anybody that needs any help, or any of my knowledge, you know, if they want to talk to me about it. And don't forget, election is on April 3rd, 2017, you've got three candidates, and I'm going to give them, in name order, that they appear on the ballot, Craig Cabral, Joe Pacchico, and Charlie Sullivan, who just walked in. So I want to thank the town of Free Town for allowing me to spend six years as a Selectman, and at that, I'll shut up.
No, you don't have to. It's your meeting.
No, no.
I'll just piggyback, I've worked with numerous Boards and numerous people, we've had arguments, but we've also had fun along the way, and working with Paul is no different than any other Board that I've worked with. So, six years is a long time, and we've got a lot of stuff done, and I know that your heart was in it, no matter if we disagreed, but it was a pleasure, actually, it really was. So, thank you.
Thank you. I'd also like to read, we gotta read, and under your tenure here, the town, we haven't had a two-and-a-half percent override, or gone for two-and-a-half percent override. All the bridges in town are either been repaired, and/or are scheduled to be repaired, the last one scheduled to repair. Some of that started before you were on, but most of it was through your stewardship. The dedication you've given to the town over the last 20 years has been remarkable, and I'd like to thank you and appreciate your input on stuff.
I'll see you in Aruba.
Aruba? And you wore a pink shirt, I see I rubbed off on you. Pink button-down shirt.
Not see-through tonight, is it?
No.
Well, that's all, I wore this pink shirt one day with a black t-shirt underneath that had lettering on it, and she points it out in front of the camera. All right, should we get rolling? All right. First thing on the agenda is, well, first of all, anybody here for public discussion other than the guy who's been talking all the time? All right. At 5:30, which we're already past that, Sean Proventia from DCR regarding property off of Chase Road, Sean, come right up.
Well, I'm honored to be here on your last night. I would have brought some flowers, I know.
The thorns, you mean?
The thorns. I've had nothing but pleasant experience, I concur with your Town Hall statements too, by the way. It's always been a pleasant conversation, pleasant visit. So, the reason I'm here is to have an update for the offer that DCR has put on the table for the property right down the street here on Chase Road. The original offer that we had put out for $200,000 was contingent on the property being delivered to DCR clean, having the house taken down, and all the trash and trailers and tires and...
Who's getting the boat?
The boat, forgot about the boat, the list goes on and on, about having all that stuff removed, and having it basically, you know, leveled and created so that, you know, we could hopefully be able to install a small parking area, but if we're successful with the larger, what we're calling a private estate conservation project. Jack is informing that the town doesn't have a mechanism for doing that kind of work, demo and removal and paying for it, which is unfortunate, but it's not, it's not the worst scenario. DCR does have a mechanism for it, but if we're going to have to cover the costs of the demo and cleanup, then we're going to have to lower the offer to you guys to $150,000. I still think that, I know that's a big difference, 25% reduction from what we had offered before, but I still think the town really at the end of it can come out ahead of the whole process, and get rid of this kind of white elephant that's been sitting out there for a long time, and you also are beating up a lot of the tax title rules on the other 120 acres approximately up behind, further up the private estate land law acres. So, that's pretty much it. So I guess I'm proposing an agreement that that's what the Board of Selectmen might be willing to put forward on the town meeting warrants in the spring, right?
Yeah.
True.
My understanding is that the town does not own this land right now, that this land is still in a tax title, is that true?
I don't know, title, the title work has not been done.
Which land, which parcel? The one on Chase Road.
The one on Chase Road.
Oh, yeah, you took it, you took it for taxes seven years ago. It was foreclosed on. Yes.
We, DCR needs to do its own title work, and we've got, we've put that out for bid, and we've got bids in for that, and, but it appears from the work that's been done so far within Town Hall that the, I think, and this is not, again, the title work needs to be done, but the house and the lot behind it appear to have more documentation as to how they came into the town hands, through the full tax title process, foreclosure, notices, the whole nine. I think that's the way it looks, and that the rest of it is more or less kind of, I'm not really sure, it's been within the town for 50-plus years or something like that, but the documentation just doesn't seem to be there.
Right.
Well, first of all, it's unfortunate that the Treasurer isn't here, but she is coming, she would know, but the land that's landlord, I'm going back a number of years, and I wish she was here, but the land that's landlord in back, it's very hard to, there's no heirs, that's the problem, and you have to take that by value, which the Treasurer can do. I'm not going to speak about the parcel upfront because I don't remember, but I'm pretty sure, I'm pretty sure that was already...
I got an email from Karen, if I can read this, you've gone that long. "We, Free Town, were granted the property in Land Court decree on 7/21/2011, recorded in Book 7717, page 182. But it wasn't on the list to transfer to the Concomitance. Normally, it would have been set for auction to reclaim the past due taxes and fees. Not sure if those rules still apply. Should probably check the Town Council on that."
Well, no, the town owns it, it's foreclosed, the town owns it.
It's got a land court, that's why.
Right, town owns it, period.
So, it's good news.
Okay, so, what are you asking for?
So, the, I am asking for your agreement to still keep the warrant article on the Spring Town Meeting, but put under a change of price from $200 to $150,000.
Will you have your title work done by then?
By Spring Town Meeting, it would probably not. It's, the, it's going to be a very complicated scope due to the lack of documentation for a lot of it. So it's going to take, it's going to take a lot longer than usual to straighten it out. But we aren't proposing to actually close on anything until the fiscal year 18 or even later.
You gotta get the grant first, for one thing.
Yeah, the next big step is to, is to get the Landscape Partnership Grant that we've applied to for, from Energy and Environmental Affairs, that's going to fund a line share of the whole project, that includes the abutting 509 acres, and that allows us to free up some of our capital funds to focus on the town of Free Town.
Have you gone into the Town Hall and talked to the Treasurer about that, about parcels?
I have, it's been, it's been a little while.
Some of those parcels, are they still on past tax title, or have they been foreclosed on? She must have told you.
No, I don't think they have been foreclosed on.
All right, so they're tax title.
Right.
In the article, you'd be, we'd be asking for authority to sign, to authorize sale? Is that what the article would be called?
No, we'd have to, the article would be to allow the town to sell.
To sell.
Yeah, the townspeople would have made the decision. I'm not sure, you can't sell property that's in tax title, you gotta have it foreclosed on for us.
Right. So, is it, should we wait until fall? Should we clear up all the paperwork, make sure things copasthetic, and then put it on for the fall town meeting? Or, I mean, I guess that would be up to the Board, or do we put it on for the annual town meeting, and if everything's not done, withdraw?
Well, that was kind of what my question was leading to.
What do you need for the application for the grant?
Nothing. For the grant, the grant is in, we're waiting to hear, actually, I think I'm going to hear this week, to be quite honest with you. So, I, personally, I think we should just, we should stay the course and keep it, keep it on Spring Town Meeting. And I don't think it hurts anybody that if we, the title comes in bad after that in DCR...
Just withdraw it.
That we just, we go by it, and then you can move on and figure out how the town's going to deal with the parcels. But this way, it allows, it just allows us to go forward for the rest of the project.
Do we have a list of every parcel that you're looking for?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, who has that list?
Jack does.
Jack has it, so it's easy for Jack to verify with the town Treasurer where they, who each parcel stands.
Correct.
Yeah, I think that that would be the first, the first, sorry, my iPad keeps going off, the first thing to do is to make sure that that gets all cleared up.
Michael's done a lot of great work on it already.
Yeah, I asked Michael to be here tonight just to, you know...
Come up and maybe you can add to this. You're sitting back there, I don't know, I thought you were just here observing.
Well, that's all I planned to do.
Sorry, I threw you in the mix.
Now he's on the clock, oh no, not Conservation, that's for Mike.
Mike has followed this very long in terms of the parcels, and has been an advocate for this project for some time, so I thought, you know, it would be appropriate to have. He's also done yeoman's work in many other ways from the Assessor's Office, he's probably the best researcher that I know in terms of trying to find out who owned what when, and unravel some of these mysteries.
Part of it is easier to determine than other parts, what you have is, some of these parcels have been listed as town owned or in the name of the town on the Assessor's records back 60, 70, 80 years, and the way that they cataloged tax titles back then was different. Now, very particular, everything's kept, you know, we take your house, we know we took your house, we know how we took your house. Back then, they had a tendency to just write it off as town-owned land, no exact description. And the maps have changed too, the Assessor's maps were updated 22 or 23 years ago, and when they did that was when they went through and combined, as we saw on ZBA, a lot of the common ownership land, and that's what some of this is. When you look at the map today, you see four lots, if you look at the map as it existed in 1993, you see eight lots, because they were beside each other and they were combined. When you start tracing back the eight lots, the title history on some of them is very clear, the title history on some of them is a lot murkier. You can have something that's 35 acres, and you can very easily find out how the town owns 20 acres of it, and the other 15 acres is like somebody made it up and just put it out in the middle of nowhere. And that's where they're going to have the hardest time doing the title searches on that part.
But do you know who owned it way back when?
Some of it, yeah, because if you start doing the histories of what's around it, they'll say, you know, it's bounded by this person, by that person, occasionally, it just disappears. I was looking at one a few weeks ago where the history of the title was very clear until you get to World War II, and then the family, instead of describing the individual article, started saying, "I convey to you everything that Charles Gurney owned when he died in 1944," and that was hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of acres. And then it starts to say, "Everything Charles Gurney owned when he died, except what we might have sold since then, and if somebody failed to record a deed," or it just makes it that much more complicated. So that's where the professional people, they get paid a lot more than I do, will sink their teeth into it and be able, hopefully, to figure out most of it. But I would imagine, and I don't want to speak for them, but the state is omnipotent, if they really want it and they can't find it, they might find some way that we don't know.
A loophole.
Yeah, they might find some way to do it that we can't do at this level. But, other than that, it's a little bit scary, but it's not terrifying.
And a lot of this land, this land is low-variety, it's wet.
Yeah, and a lot of it, I mean, you can tell it wasn't valued very much then, people were losing, it's a tax title, people were losing 20 acres for $2. It's just not anything that anybody valued even 80 years ago.
Sure. But, it'd be a nice watch, in the woods, if you had some good boots.
Lovely conservation land, and you get a trail trail.
I could pick tires out for it.
So maybe, maybe we should just leave it off for the time being and pull it out in the town meeting.
Yeah, and we can pull, we can pull it anytime between now and when the warrant closes, so even if we know by then that, I just don't want to get people all confused, you know what I mean? When you leave it on sometimes, if we knew beforehand, it would be easier to solve.
Right. So... Can you pull it out last minute, or how close, just whenever? I think the Board right here, they're meeting.
You have to get his pass.
Be charged with the majority.
Oh, good. Ah, you got it, yeah. There you go.
And if you left it on as a vote...
That's nice, right?
Yeah. If you leave it on as a vote to authorize and it doesn't happen, then you just, the town can authorize you to sell the land and even...
Well, the question I had earlier was, would we put the article just to give us authorization? So once it clears, it might take two years, but once it's cleared up, then we have the authorized authorization just to sign the papers.
Yeah, and if Mark doesn't agree with that, he can flag it and he'll let us know that that's not going to work.
At worst case scenario, you might vote to authorize now, and, you know, somebody might say, "Oh, the fiscal year ended, you have to vote to authorize again."
Reauthorize.
Repeat the vote.
The parcels that are in question, how far back did you go?
One of them, I went back to 1895. And 1895 established who previously owned it, and then it's just one of those things where it sort of disappeared into the mist after that.
I wonder if Jonathan Silstein from Copman and Page would know of any rules as well, since, you know, he does most of our land stuff in town, so, a quick question.
He doesn't do the land, he doesn't, they don't, Copman and Page, it's not a true big tax title.
No, but he might know of, you know, after going back so many years...
Abandoned property.
Yeah, abandoned property, he might know they answered that.
What might have been advertised for so long, certain...
And say, if, if in an interesting scenario, you were able to identify, hey, this person, the tax title was never foreclosed, and this person actually still owns it, if they come forward and say, "I want my land," they've got to deal with 80 years' worth of back taxes, so they're a lot more likely to say, "No, please just take it away."
Exactly.
Plus, they can't get to it anyway.
Right. I wouldn't, I wouldn't want you guys to run up any unnecessary charges.
No, I would just be a quick question.
Counsel, okay.
Yeah.
Because, I mean, no matter, no matter what Copman and Page says, our attorneys are still going to have to be comfortable with the process, and we're still going to have to go ahead and do our own title work to provide any information.
Absolutely.
And just as a side note, we got the, we got the bid in, and it's high enough that we actually have to get governor's approval. So, it's going to be a very expensive title.
You're talking a bunch of politics here.
I'm not talking, I'm just saying, I'm just saying it's going to be an expensive title.
I figured before you left, you'd give us your credit card.
The government won the person.
Oh. So, are we good?
Yeah, for now.
So, I guess we'll, so we're allowed for the time being?
At the 150, the reduced price.
The reduced price.
Okay, great, great, great news, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Okay.
Thanks for the backup.
Thank you very much.
All right, you have, take care and good luck.
Thank you.
Thanks, Michael.
Next thing on the agenda, Laura Moreau, from the Planning Board, she's coming up to talk to us, she's got, she's got her able-bodied bodyguard, the chairman of the Planning Board, Kevin Maris.
I also sent you an email with this, and you have to kind of have the, thank you.
This is regarding marijuana.
I'm going to, it is being, it's passing right now, recreational marijuana.
Okay, we're talking recreational marijuana.
Recreational marijuana.
Sales.
Sale, correct.
No.
Sales cultivation.
Yeah, recreational marijuana.
Yeah. So, if you may have seen the memo I sent, so it's really just kind of a follow-up to that, to check in, engage the temperature of the Board of Selectmen. The Plating Board for some time has been sort of turning around, you know, zoning options for recreational marijuana, but before we get too far down that road, there are some basic sort of decisions that have to be considered by the Board of Selectmen regarding, they want to limit the number of establishments, prohibit retail component, those are, you know, some questions. We're not going to talk about where to cite it if, in fact, you want to prohibit the retail sale, so, following up with you folks on that. Limiting the number or the type also needs to be about questions in the town election, if that's in fact what you want to do.
I see a number of towns that are prohibiting it for the time being, is the moratorium.
A moratorium.
Can you speak to that for a moment?
The moratorium is similar to, they did a similar thing with medical marijuana, that one that was first legalized, it gives the town time to examine the issues and to consider where they want, what they want to do with it, if they want to cite it, if they want to prohibit it, and the AG is allowing that through spring of 2018, at minimum, we want to do that while we sort this all out.
Is that the recommendation that the Plating Board is making to us?
Yes, based on myself, Lauren, Board Health Agent, yeah, we went to a, call it a symposium or just a PowerPoint presentation from Copman and Page on this subject, and that was what they were recommending to all the cities and towns until legislature. They've got, how many proposed amendments now, 22, 23, something, proposed amendments to this petition law?
I think everything washes out.
Right. But in the meantime, it doesn't mean, okay, we wait till that time and then start working on it. Unfortunately, on the law, the way it's written, once that moratorium has been expired, if we don't have proper zoning in place, and proper zoning, I mean, you know, where it's going to be located, when the activity's going to be allowed, or from your perspective, if in fact you're going to allow, if you're going to put this to a upper and then vote, see if the people of the town want to have retail sales, or any aspect of the recreational marijuana. But if there's nothing in place, then it's assumed that recreational marijuana can go anywhere that medical marijuana isn't currently located. So all the good work that the Board of Selectmen have done through their host community agreements with our current American site, to not allow retail, that could be all up in smoke should we not do something.
And they're going to start...
Oh, jeez, I didn't even talk.
Did you say that?
But I'll fuck them.
I didn't mean that, folks.
Is that what I'm smoking?
Yeah. I apologize.
It's high time we get back to the...
Yeah. I really, really did not mean that, but anyway.
They're going to start to take a look at applications as early as April 1st, 2018, from folks that are in the medical industry, they're going to get the first crack at the recreational licenses, starting April 1st. So if we have a moratorium, it'll cover us through...
Give you guys time.
Right.
Right, and give the town time, again, there's many amendments being proposed, I just read about another today, Jack may be aware of it, the MMA, Mass Municipal Association, is approaching the legislative, the state legislators, to see if they can't get an amendment. Right now, it would require a town-wide vote, not town meeting, not Board of Selectmen, but a actual ballot.
Special election.
Special election kind of deal. They're asking that an amendment be made to the common law to allow it to be the legislative body, so whether that's specifically just the Board of Selectmen, or maybe it's town meeting, still, less expensive for the town, less of a burden, of all nine gods, and it's more readily available than coming up with an election and all that, so...
Hopefully, that's an option, but, but if it's not...
If it's not, we have to work under the presumption that as the law sits today, that is how it's going to be, and that's what Copman and Page was doing, although the moratorium was suggested because there may be some additions, this does protect us until then. But until that time, I think we all need to have a serious discussion relative to recreational marijuana. Not only can we outlaw it by referendum, we can also, is it a vote of the Board of Selectmen to allow a percentage of our liquor licenses?
If you want to limit it to less than 20% of the available liquor licenses, that's also a ballot question. If you want to set it at 20% to new or to establishment, that could be a town meeting actually.
Right.
If we put a moratorium until April of 18...
You want it to come past that town meeting.
Past town meeting, so it'll be through July.
July of 18.
July of 18. Okay. July of 18. That gives everybody a chance to look at this. They can change the law and everything else, we'll have time to plan.
Right, that suits them.
Right.
But I think...
But, but I think you want the moratorium at minimum, but if you're, let's just say that you want to theoretically prohibit sales, you're going to need to have a special election to put that on a ballot, and Copman and Page is also recommending that zoning bylaw also in tandem with that vote be passed at a town meeting. I'm not clear from council right now if that needs to be done at this town meeting?
We'll have it, we'll have it ready for this town meeting, it's basically one of those bylaws that says that this is prohibited, and it's confirmed once it goes to ballot. So if it doesn't pass a ballot, then that bylaw would be null and void. But again, it's a, it's a recommendation by Copman and Page, to clear up any ambiguity. I think the most important part of coming here, and Lauren and I have discussed it, Bob's been to the Fennell Board meeting, we've discussed this, is the importance of you folks knowing, and the Board of Health knowing, what their rules are, what your options. We could have it all, we could have none, we could have it limited to by a percentage from you folks, or we could outlaw it, so, and if that's the case, then we could... So, and if that's the case, then we, there are local taxes that, that can be imposed on it. You know, there's no host community agreement with recreational marijuana. It's to be regulated like any other business. You can't, you can't.
There's an excise tax, correct, hard, sales tax.
Up to two percent.
You can do a local, right.
Compared to like what's allowed in Colorado.
Right. It's a local sales tax that, if I'm not mistaken, I don't know if it can be, it'd be applied just to this, or it may, it may not, I don't know. But there are, you cannot charge as long as fees for, for permits, it's gotta be in line with everything else. Now, with the medical marijuana, you could basically set your, so what's some towns are doing? Do you need a border health permit? Fifteen, ten thousand dollars, thank you. You know, I think we did it the right way here, in fact, quite honestly. So.
The mar, uh, the moratorium can be done by a vote of the board tonight?
No, that's a zoning bylaw change, and Copeland and Page actually has sample language.
That goes to town meeting.
So that needs to go on a town meeting.
So that has to be on the warrant.
Yes.
At minimum, the moratorium.
So there's nothing we can do tonight?
No, but we're asking you to consider, if, if you are looking to prohibit or limit the number, I think that should be decided before town meeting warrant is closed.
This town meeting?
Well, it could go to the fall town meeting, too. If we put, we put the moratorium on, on this one.
Right.
Until July of two thousand and eighteen.
Yeah.
Then Lloyd could put in.
That's what I thought.
In the fall, and then along with the ballot.
Guidance for the fall town meeting. That would normally be all your zoning stuff, any of that.
Fall town meeting.
Yeah, that's correct.
So moratorium could be done this one. And then we've just got something back from Copeland and Page very recently, relative to some other wording that we should, we could put in there, in conjunction with the ballot. And then you folks can, you know, deliberate on it and take your time, just like we can, to come up with, with a, with a solution to this.
So tonight, we could say that you wanna put article on.
Basically, give us your blessing so that we can.
The warrant's not open yet, so you can't do that.
So what, well, you can ask us.
We could say.
It's gonna be a planning board article to zoning, to zoning amendment.
By consensus, should we forward this?
By consensus.
By consensus.
Should we forward this article to you, to your consideration for warrant? You, you, you put it on.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
So we'll do that work.
You wanna vote on that in consensus, or you just wanna, I mean, really, you know?
Okay.
What do you wanna do with this?
Yeah, by consensus.
I hear you loud and clear. Yeah, you'll get it.
Moratorium.
Yeah. But I think it's just, like I said.
You have to start, you know, your public hearings, and that might be a.
Right, we need to do our public hearings.
Charge, uh, hearings, so.
Yeah.
For the cause of, for the, you could, uh.
What happened? Do it.
Did you give a sample? Cause I know you had a sample.
Of original language?
Yeah.
Uh, that should be the K and P, my own, in the code.
They got the band, they got the.
I thought you had done one or two more, like, I saw something in the other, yeah, packet.
Oh, like in our letterhead, in our article format? No, I haven't, I haven't done it yet. I did, we have a lot of, a lot of changes at town meetings.
Yeah.
Might have been something else.
Correct.
I think I'm up to six.
Hey, listen, you have to pay by your own.
Six?
Thousand dollars for an article?
Or, or summer letters? Zoning articles? Yeah, one is zoning.
When?
I'm not creating new.
First, first off.
They want to.
I wanna get that done, not right now.
I think we've done a pretty good job of streamlining the zoning at town meeting in the recent couple of years.
There's no map changes, some of them were little.
Yeah, some of them are just word changes. Yeah.
All right.
So are we doing anything that, we said we.
We're gonna put it on the article, but, okay.
We're not.
They're gonna, they're gonna, they're gonna give us an article on it.
We're gonna write you with an article, and then, cause we're gonna have to hold a public hearing and all that, but I didn't think you.
All right. So it makes sense.
I think it should be like an ongoing dialogue, and we can check back in and, and see what, what we wanna think about.
I think as soon as we found out that the state of Massachusetts voted for this, I think this board was really upfront about putting together a committee for a sort of a subgroup to talk about this, not let it go and not forget about it, but to make sure that there was ongoing conversation. So I'm glad to see that you guys are moving forward. I also would recommend having Carlton part of the discussion, because, you know, his men himself are gonna be the ones out there watching and making sure that things are done according to protocol. So I would recommend having him be part of the conversation, at least when his part of this comes up.
This board needs to have a discussion and different point of what we wanna do, or what our, our guidance for the town should be towards. Do we wanna not allow it in town totally? Do we wanna go by state, current state statute by the petition, by the petition? Do we wanna set our own number, that kind of thing?
Cultivation okay, but retail is not, or vice versa?
But I think you have to have cultivation with retail. You have to sell, they have to sell their own, don't they? They can't buy.
They can grow it someplace else, but they could.
In state, under their, under their mass name.
And then, and then also, how is it sold? Is it sold as baked goods? Is it sold as in canisters? I mean, there's a whole.
Well, that's all.
Our authority does not have anything to do with that. If you allow retail, you allow retail. If you don't allow retail, you don't allow retail.
That's all part of that twenty-two amendments.
Yeah.
Also, the federal government is now coming very heavily against this, so I'm not sure how that's all gonna play out. Even though it was a state, they are heard again this afternoon, so who knows what's gonna happen.
There are a million different pieces, but we really need to operate under the assumptions.
Absolutely.
I said, we did a good job getting out front of the medical marijuana. I think it allowed Free Town to be positioned in, in a good place to, to get a, a very town-friendly post-community agreement with some of the facilities that come in, so.
Jackie, do we know how that article voted in town? I think it was article four. Was there, was there a positive response in town, or was there mostly negative response in town from that article?
All right, I came, I came in at the end of this.
Oh, I'm sorry. Medical marijuana, I saw back then, I just thought.
Medical, what did it pass?
I'm not medical, I'm sorry. The recreational marijuana in.
State ballot question.
The state ballot question.
In town?
Yeah.
It was like fifty-two or something like that?
It passed, it passed, it passed, yeah. But I don't remember the numbers.
It was close to the state average, or the fifty-five number?
Yeah.
It was close. I wanna say Cheryl, I had Cheryl one morning before you came in, it was something like fifty-four.
Okay. So we have to take that in consideration, too, that, you know, it wasn't a landslide against, and we're gonna try to allow it versus, or, or vice versa. We're gonna try to abolish it, and it was ninety percent before, so.
I don't think there's anything you can do. I mean, people still have the right for personal use, personal growing, and I don't think that the town can do anything, you know, just to that.
Not right now, no. Person use, personal grow, up to six plants, one household can have up to twelve plants.
Under lock and key.
But what we can do is where, when, how.
How many?
And how many?
And what kind?
And we all know why, so.
Good times.
All right.
The world has gone mad.
That's true, but since we're along for the ride, we might as well, we might as well get out in front of it.
They had the same discussion back in the twenties, so.
Yeah, alcohol, right?
Yeah, exactly. There you go. The temperance movement, so, there we are.
Thank you, okay.
Thank you.
She lost the heart, see how quickly she's.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, so let's get down to where we can do something. All right, DCR is off the table. The next thing, let's talk about our fire chief, his abatement, spoken in February and March.
That's open season.
He by notify, to Kim Fields from Chief Sylvia, notified that the ambulance abatement fee for the month of February is twenty thousand, thirty-two dollars and ninety-four cents. Any action by the board?
Um, actually, um.
You have a second one, also?
I believe they're gonna be combined. I think there was an error, as far as I understand, and that this is both for the month of February. There's only one, so they should be combined, so the total should be in the amount of twenty-one thousand, one hundred, thirty-six dollars and ninety-four cents.
Correct.
Is that correct?
They should be combined, yeah.
Thank you.
What was the number again?
Twenty-one, one thirty-six, ninety-four.
How, then how can we have two sheets? I'm just being a wise guy.
There was an error.
Twenty-one thousand, one thirty-six.
Ninety-four.
Ninety-four, okay.
Second emotion for twenty, you did make that a motion.
I'll make that as a motion.
I'm sorry?
That's okay.
Second motion, twenty-one thousand, one thirty-six, ninety-four.
Okay, motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Takes care of that one. Town administrators report.
All right. American update, Scott and Gary and I, Scott Barbado, the building inspector, zoning enforcement officer, and Gary Soria, the fire chief, and I met several times with Campagnelli and American staff, as they've been developing their plans. They'll be filing with the state building code officials, and they get clarification on the need to sprinkle the greenhouse portion of their building. Last time we met was just last Friday. Also, application for the administrative right of entry to the former T N D A Troy company property, the Preaktown Screw Site property, was submitted to the district court last week. I said, I submitted it on behalf of the town and the town of Krishna, along with Brian Noble and the two health officers. This is to evaluate, give us access to evaluate the soils on the Krishna property for contamination in order to be able to then file for additional funds to clean that up. It appears there'll be no problem getting it approved. I've talked to the assistant clerk, and he's very, been very cooperative. And I should have that done this week. XL, I sent you a very interesting document that was filed as a response to the final plan approval, which, which was commissioned by the appellant to the XL project. And I sent you a copy of that following this report. I suggested that the board might wanna review it. Also made note of the fact that John Winkler, who is identified as air quality control expert, working for air compliance strategies, and another expert that were hired by the appellant, that he worked for DEP and worked with me on the air, air quality permit for CMS, the regional, the regional waste drainage plant. So I sent that off to you in the subsequent email, a few minutes after I sent you that one, and suggested you might wanna take a look at that. It was, it was very extensive comments on the, what needed to be done to comply with both air quality and other requirements of DEP. And I think it's going to serve to help us to resolve some of these issues that have been plaguing the neighborhood over there. So it's very, very important that we stay in touch with the people that are trying to get those questions that are raised by this report addressed by DEP. I gave you another document on it as well, if you wanna take a look at that. The, that's it, that's, that's about it for this week. Thank you.
Okay. Next thing on the agenda has something to do with me. I'm gonna hand it to the town administrator, he can read it. That was from the COY.
Yeah, Dear Selectman, again, it's from the Council on Agent. Dear Selectman, we're writing this in regard to our BRMBAD program. This program takes many volunteers doing various jobs to get it accomplished. Paul Sadak has been driving an old van that was given to us for about six years. He volunteered just in time when we lost three volunteer drivers for the program. Those drivers used their own vehicles. We met in Tottenham with Boston Food Bank. This van is loaded with all the food for the hundred and twenty senior families that have qualified for the program. Paul has expressed he would like to keep volunteering for us. We would like to know if there's anything that can be done, can he be made a special town employee and still drive this van for us? Any help or suggestions would be greatly appreciated. Signed by the board members at COY.
Okay. I'll just comment on this here. As a selectman, I was driving the van and covered by the town if I got to an accident. I am not covered any further, no longer being a selectman, so I do not intend to, to, to drive unless I'm covered by the town. If somebody hits me, when I'm driving that van, I carry about four other people, or if we lose a wheel and the van turns over, I'm gonna get sued personally. I'm not leaving myself open to any type of liability, so. Whatever the board wants to do, it's their business. If you want, you want something else, go, we'll go right to.
I, I think that we need to ask Joe Fear if that, if we can, because I don't know, since he's not on the board anymore, whether he can or not. And I think that's that question, and I don't know if you've already asked him yet.
No, I haven't.
Okay, so I think that we should probably ask Joe Fear, just to make sure that even legally, if we can or can't.
Yeah, does it have to be a one-year separation, too, from an employee, from an elected official?
I think you're, the special municipal employee can't be put in there any time.
Anytime.
I mean, I just not leaving myself.
No, I don't, I don't.
Excuse me, Paul, you, you would have to, again, it can't be a person that can be designated as a special municipal employee, has to be the group. So if it's a board, it's gotta be, say, the whole board. So you would have to, yeah, talk to Joe Fear, cause it can't be one person.
Right.
No, I'm saying it can't be one person on that special municipal. It has to be a group. So it might be all the van drivers for the Council on Agent, and, and that's how you would fall under it. You can't do one.
I don't wanna be a van driver for the Council on Agent. We, well, here's what happened. One of the guys that, all the guys had strokes, a couple died, and these guys were using their own vehicles to go up and get the food. We had a bus that was, that Gene Fox actually got the bus years ago, it was sitting at the town barn, it wasn't being used. So Lee and I, when we used to go up on the, a bunch of us would go up and get the food, we had, Chuck was kind enough to take most of the seats out. We left, I think, one, one, two, I think three rows of seats, cause we, we tried to get volunteers to go up with us. In fact, recently, we can't even get the volunteers, because these guys are getting pretty old. I mean, I'm getting old, too, but I'm not as old as some of these guys. Every, you know, Chuck sends two of his highway guys sometimes, cause we're shot-handed, to go up there. So we commented this bus, and we've been using it now for three, over three years. But I'm not doing it anymore, cause I'm not gonna put myself into a position where, if something happens in an accident, that I'm gonna, I'm gonna get sued and have nothing, and have the town say, like, you're on your own, it ain't happening, okay? So whatever it is, it is. But that's, that's what I said.
I'm just telling you about special municipal employees, that they might be able to, to, to do something for you, I'm not saying that, but I'm just saying that designation for special municipal employee is a group, it's not one person.
It's up to.
It's, it's.
Now, when the, when the town hires people and gives them in lieu of taxes, is, they're considered employees, though, are they, are they not?
To be in lieu of, you mean to be paid to reduce your taxes? You have to meet a, you have to meet a low income level. I'm not gonna meet that level, okay?
Okay.
All right, let's just, we'll talk to Joe Fear, and we'll find out, okay?
All right, the next thing on the agenda.
Insurance, an insurance policy to cover all non-paid employees anyhow. We do have a lot of volunteers that.
We should have that, because right now, as we pointed out the last meeting.
Jack, can you look into that, please?
Yeah.
A policy, cause we have planning boards that go out, the conservation does site visits and stuff.
Water commission, they trip and do it.
We talked about that at the last meeting.
Right, so we need to, we need to look at that.
Yeah, we, we have already gotten something proven insurance books.
But if we can include, if we can include the van driver, even Paul doesn't wanna do it, somebody in the future.
Should we, yeah, I mean, maybe, maybe a new selectman wants to do it, you know?
Again, this, I'll share, I'll share again, I think you've gotten the correspondence with regard to town councils.
Well, town council and the correspondence. If you read the correspondence from Mark Rich, it's very simple. Oh, we shouldn't do this because we open up the town for additional costs. There's a provision in the law, I think it's chapter one fifty-two, that if the town adopts it, then they cover, it covers all these elected and appointed officials when they're on, when they're working for the town. Right now, there's no coverage. Somebody goes out and breaks an ankle, and they don't have health insurance. They're on their own. Planning board goes out and does an inspection. Soil board, remember when we used to go out? And a couple of ladies used to wear high heels.
Not me.
Not you, but one of the ladies, two of the ladies used to wear high heels, they break their ankle, guess what? They're not covered. So it's nuts. Anyway, can we go on? Wanna move on?
Yeah.
All right. A letter here from Police Chief Carlton Abbott, friends of support of our Police K nine program. We had a presentation at the last meeting, the Police K nine program. I sought guidance from town accountant Kimberly Fields regarding the best approach to handle donations. Miss Field. Miss Field, Miss Field, Kimberly, Kimberly recommends, Kimberly recommends that we establish an account for the receipt of donations. She advised me that the board of selectmen has the authority to establish the, the police canine donation account. So this, I'm gonna cut some of this extra stuff out that not, that I don't have highlighted. Carlton is requesting that the board vote to establish a police canine donation account where funds received from donors will be used to support the canine program, including purchase of medicine, medical supplies, medical care, and he's talking about for the dog. Handler and backfill wage, backfill wages relating to the handling, attendance when the, when the handler's at training. He talked about this at the last meeting. Professional development and deployment of the animal, reimbursement, travel and lodging expenses. The dog is gonna be kept at the individual canine officer's home, and, you know, we're gonna pay for the food and so forth. So he's asking for a canine donation account that anybody who wants to make donations to that account, that money will be in, in that account, it will help to offset any other cost that the town may have to absorb. And if I remember it, it wasn't much that the town had absorbed over the first three years.
Three years, right.
So the board, if they wanna make a motion.
I'll make that motion, to allow Town Accounting to set up an account for the donations for the canine fund.
Second with discussion.
Okay, motion made in second with discussion.
Only if this passes on town meeting floor, correct? Because if this doesn't, if this doesn't get passed on town meeting floor, then there's no reason to have a special fund, unless we're gonna try to get all the, all the money from a special fund, so.
This would keep that open, that if it did fail at town meeting floor, that they could fund it through a don, entire donation program, but.
But Carlton, we would have to make sure that Carlton knew that the only way we would have that canine is that if it.
Through donation.
Through donation specifically.
Through this fund, right.
So.
I, I, I would, I would go along with Lisa's recommendation that establish the, the account as long as it passes. If it doesn't, I think the board should revisit that in the future.
And maybe in the, maybe even in the.
All right, I'll make a motion, amend my motion, to include the language only in the event that the article passes at town meeting, the, this annual town meeting.
You going second?
Second.
Okay, motion made in second. Selectman Joe's changed his wording. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Ally, you got that right, Sam?
I meant, we got the actual.
Now, don't start. All right, let's see. We got that done. Financial, Kim, are you gonna hurry?
No.
Okay, good. Oh, you're gonna stay here anyway. All right, so we can go through, there was, that's right, you're gonna stay.
He's skipping over me.
You're not gonna.
He's, he's still not ready to pronounce her name, is he?
Go ahead, you can start popping the phone.
But what, this here?
Go ahead, yeah.
This doesn't make any sense. What, the, this is, you're talking about the request for transfer?
Oh, no, I thought you were gonna go right to Kim.
No, Tree Ward.
All right, we're gonna do Tree, all right, sorry.
Oh, Tree Ward.
Yeah. It's all yours.
Okay, there's a request from the Tree Ward. He made a request for a transfer from the reserve fund, which has to go through the selectmen, and we have to say yes or no, this is gonna go to the finance committee. In the request, it was for $1,425. It says personnel costs for 70 hours of work to be taken, to be done during the remaining months of fiscal year 17 by the Tree Ward. And it says, see attachment from the Tree Ward. I'm glad you're here, Kim. The following is a request for additional money for the Tree Ward Department. Because of gypsy moss, winter moss, in the last two years of drought conditions, we are having more large trees dying and are stressing. I have experienced two dozen or more trees every three months or so that have to be taken down. I'm adding some words that were not written here, but I know what he meant, not that I've talked to him, I haven't. So for, so therefore, I, I have spent my budget, I would like to ask for another $7,000 by the end of June 2017. Do you have, does yours say that $7,000?
Yeah, I changed it from five to seven.
Right. So I think the front sheet is wrong.
There's two requests. One is for personnel and one is for expenses.
Oh, that's my problem. I don't have the, I don't have.
Because that's how town meeting appropriates.
Okay, I don't have, I don't have the second. Does anybody have one that says $7,000 on it?
No, one should say $1,425.
I have that one.
And one says $5,575.
You have the one that says, I don't have that.
No, I wanna just give you one.
Yeah, just stay with one. That's why.
Both of them must be in the signature file.
Okay, well, let's see if they're in the signature file. What I was reading is.
No, I keep it on the phone when I call.
Yeah, there's two in the, sorry, there's two in the, hold on, there's one. Ally.
Did I just split him up?
Ally, this one says fi, this one says $5,575.
So you have one scanned and one in a signature.
And one for $1,1425.
Right, that's not in the signature file.
So I scanned one and I put the other one in the signature file.
There you go. All right. All right. So you don't get a bonus this week.
I don't get a bonus.
Okay, all right. So we have two of them. We'll take my copy of the, of the lower one, across this, so for total, and see what the board wants to do.
Just increase him in the fall.
You don't, $5,000.
Right.
$5,000.
That's because we're taking down trees when we're supposed to.
Oh, God, you go along that one.
Sorry.
Well, you're right.
Right. I mean, somewhere along, I, I asked this in the fall, when he wanted so much money, and he said, the same exact reasoning right here is what he said in the fall. And we asked, do you have everything laid out? Do you know exactly where you go? I have it all, I have it all, this is all I need. I don't know anymore.
I think trees die and he doesn't know about it, come on. Trees die. And if they're fallen, taking down wires.
This is the, this is the first time, and we gave him $20,000 or $15,000 for a warrant article last year or the year before.
I'll tell you part of the, what I see is part of the problem. I'll tell you what I see is part of the problem. You know, how can I be politically correct? I don't care about being political.
You're on top tonight!
That's right, people get old. You know, the Tree Ward used to do a lot of this work on his own. He doesn't do that anymore. Plus, a lot of these trees, you just can't lay over by cutting it at the bottom. They gotta use bucket trucks. We don't have a bucket truck. So the guy, he has to hire the different tree services to come out. And he's the Tree Ward, and he has to stay there to make sure everything's going properly. I mean, they're working on some big trees, so, I mean, that's where the cost is coming from. It isn't like we're giving this guy a ton of money. We're spending this money on, on private companies that we hi, that the town hires with bucket trucks. I mean, if you have to have trees taken down on your yacht, find out how much it's gonna cost you. Let me tell you, it's just amazing how high it is. But that's the reality of it.
I'm, all I'm asking is for a, an updated list of what he needs to get done, where they are. We don't have that in front of us. I have no way of knowing if the money that we gave him the last time was used for the trees that he said he was gonna take down, or where they used for some other reason. I have no way of knowing that.
Well, I would think that, Kim, there's gotta be legitimate bills when we pay out money.
Oh, really? All of the article money has been spent. I think there's $23 left. Basically, it's $800 every time they have the truck go out to take down a tree. Apparently, some of these trees that have to come down are in, require a police detail in order for the bucket truck to be on the road and to have traffic navigate. And the police details, as you know, it's a four-hour minimum.
$25 an hour, whoop, I can't remember.
It does, it does get expensive. So, you know, at this point, he was basically, he has three more trees that he needs to take down, which would be $2,400. The police details, $2,632. He already has a detail for trees that came down that totals $1,880. So he's got some.
So this, this $7,000 he's asking for is finish taking down the three trees that haven't been done and back paying the work that has been done, or is that all, all been paid already?
Nope, that thing for the police details, the, the officers have been paid, but, so he overspent his.
Yeah, he did.
He's.
All right, see, this is negative 54.
Yes.
On this request for my, transfer fund request.
Fifty, yes, $54 in payroll is over.
Doesn't it now have a special rate?
No.
Make sure. City of Lubbock does. It's a special rate that we haven't, I haven't said that you could speak. He's gonna hit me, huh?
You're only gonna have an hour and a half of this, so.
There's your gavel.
You should be gaveling everything. Going out strong, that's it.
All right, what are we doing here?
What do I do here?
Well, we need to backfill at least, whether.
He needs the $1,425.
Yes.
Right now, there is no question about that.
Correct.
Does that cover the police details, the 14? No, it doesn't.
No, it still doesn't cover the police details.
She said it was $2,000 something.
Well, I thought that was for the three going forward.
Yeah, that's what I thought too.
That was really for the remaining four trees that he's got out there, right?
The 54, or the, whatever it is, the.
That's just payroll. So you would have to at least recommend that the $54 and $36.
Yes.
Be covered, because by law, we have to pay payroll.
Yep.
But he's then out of money in order to do any more work for the rest of the year. So the $1,425 would be 70 hours potentially for March, April, May, and June for tree work that would be done.
In case anything emergency comes up, right.
Correct. So at a minimum, you would recommend at least the $54, $36, and then if you don't recommend anything else, then he's not working for the next four months.
Do we owe any back pay?
The $1,425.
Yeah, any back work.
He has not submitted, I'm sorry.
Details.
Yes, there is a bill from the, from the police department for $1,880 that has not been, that, that officers have been paid because they have paid.
But we haven't paid the fund back.
We haven't paid.
So that has to be put in there too. That's our intention.
That is part of the $5,575 that's being requested.
Right.
Because it's not payroll for the Tree Warden, it's a service.
So the $1,425 plus the back wages was, what'd you say it was?
$1,180, right?
$1,180.
That's, the police detail is $1,880.
So $3305 is, would get us to, that's the $1,425 plus the $1,800, would fund him for the rest of the year and pay the back on the, the offices, correct?
It funds him and pays the officer that doesn't take down any more trees.
Doesn't take any down anymore trees until a new warrant comes up.
Right, and he only gets paid when he actually goes out and works.
Right.
So there's, if you're not gonna fund, take more trees down, don't fund them for the extra payroll.
Well, in case something does come up. So if a tree does come down, he has to cut it up on, on the ground. No, it doesn't cover him to go send bucket truck out, bucket trucks out. But it wouldn't have money there, so if a tree was laying down, he had to take it down with no extra expense, he would be able to do that.
Why don't we do the $3305 right now and have him come in at our next meeting to talk to us if he needs to? If he's gonna put in a warrant article for $20,000 to say, this is what it's gonna cost me, or whatever the amount is in, for the annual town meeting, then at least we can have some sort of dialogue about that.
I concur.
All right. So I'll make a motion to move this forward to the finance committee for a reserve transfer for the Tree Warden in the amount of $3,305.
All right, so before I call the vote, we got two documents here. What should I put on each document?
That's what I would like to know, what you're gonna do. Are you doing the $1,425 as personnel?
$1,425 and the $1,800.
And the $1,800 on the second document.
All right, so I'm gonna cross out the 55 and put 1,800, even. $1,880, correct?
Yep.
Okay, that's what we're asking for.
And the other ones, the $1,425.
The other one would be $1,425.
That's $1,425.
Okay, motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. So this is, this is 320, can pass this on to the finance committee? Anybody here from the finance committee?
Chair is coming in right now.
He's exhausted all of his pay, his wages.
All right, good to hear. All right, we good for that, huh?
I want to read it first. Not with this $1,425. Without that, it's exhausted.
Right, but.
He's exhausted as far as, as far as hiring anybody.
And his, and pay himself.
No, we gave him.
No, no, we gave him enough money.
That $1,425 should fund him the rest of the year, rest of the fiscal year?
Yeah.
It should, he would have up to 70 hours to work for the remaining four months.
Just pray that we water, we don't get too many more. All right, next thing on the agenda. Trying to stay within, we're six minutes late.
Right.
Six minutes late, the board, the water, the board of water sewer commissioners and their guests, come right up.
Hi. Is that Ryan, how are you? How are you?
Good evening, good evening.
Who's the third water commissioner?
Hey, I don't know. He's slacking off, that's slacking off.
He's at his pain.
That's, that's, he's at his brain, dude.
That was a good one.
He's on fire tonight. Smoking even.
Yeah, smoking, right.
I have to, what, call a meeting.
Did you say smoking?
I did.
The board of the three town water and sewer commissioners.
I'll second that motion.
President R.
Brad Piper.
Bob Parker.
Kevin DeBax.
Ryan Tran.
And the meeting is being recorded by the selectmen.
Ally Galls.
I'm free camp.
I'm free camp. Free camp. And now, meeting is finished.
All right, what you guys gonna tell us?
I'd like to wish you a happy, fantastic state of the nation.
Oh, thank you. Should've taken me out to lunch.
He would if you paid. Ryan is here with the updater and more specific prices and what we're gonna need for the pump station. So I'll turn it over to Ryan at this time.
All right, before we, before we do that, we have one thing on the agenda about the, the valve. About the selection of the motor splitter.
Yeah.
You wanna talk about that?
Yeah.
Man, so there was a, it receives, I believe it was in early March now, March second night, for the award of the emergency valve at the, outside the water treatment facility, which will essentially, if there's a fire in the Asona Village area, anywhere downstream of the filter, filters, the valve would automatically open and allow fire flow to be able to pass. Right now, they can't, when the filter's not aligned, so. We received some good pricing, and we called a bunch of references for CN Corp, and I've actually, or actually written in Asona, and I've actually worked with them about five, six years ago. And we called three other references, and at this point, given the price and the recommendation, uh, we'd recommend to award the contract to them for the valve project.
At a lot of.
Fifty-four thousand, two dollars and nineteen cents.
You guys, you guys get the package ready?
Yeah.
Is there any motion regarding this?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to award the bid to CN Corp. for the total bid price of fifty-four thousand, two dollars and nineteen cents.
Second.
Motion made, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Abstained, only because I'm a Water Commissioner.
The only thing we need from the Selectmen's meeting is just the signed notice of award on the last page, and then the process from here is that we'll let them know that you've awarded the project to them. We'll get them, uh, sent essentially a memo that has instructions on how to complete the agreement and the bonds that are required for the project. And the next time we come back, we'll have, um, actual executed contracts for you to sign, uh, and the signed notice of receipt and allow the contractors to begin the work and the shop drive process.
Alright, now Mr. Parker.
Well, we will, uh, first, Ryan, so you went on more details of the, uh, new proposed filter site.
Sure, um, so after the last Selectmen's meeting, there was some, um, email exchange, um, between myself, Jack, I think it's forwarded me an email from the producer about the need for an owner's project manager. And then after discussions, um, with the Town Council, uh, given the magnitude of the project being over a million and a half dollars, in this case, an owner's project manager, because it is a, is a vertical, vertical construction that's under chapter, which is bid under chapter one forty-nine, uh, an owner's project manager is required. An owner's project manager, stop me if you know this already, but it could either be, it has to be either, um, professional engineer, an architect, or someone, I won't say a layperson, but someone who knows the business of building construction for seven years or more. So there's times where we've done work in other towns where it's been, uh, say, like a DPW director who's a PE, it's been a building inspector because he's got years of experience with building inspections. So there's been, in cases where some towns have been able to get away with the cost of hiring, going on hiring an OPM, to have someone doing it in-house, so first, there's that option. The other option is, um, technically, per the, uh, state law, you're supposed to go out for bid qualifications for owner's project manager. Then they help you go through the process of selecting a designer, um, who would design the building and infrastructure. And then the owner's project manager, depending upon the scope of work that's written for that role, uh, will either, um, end after the selection process or the design process, after that goes up the bid, or you can choose to have him involved in every aspect of the project from start to finish, depending upon the magnitude of the work. You know, again, we're talking about two million dollar pre-engineered building, which essentially comes already designed, and it's just erected on-site. Um, this is not a police station or a school building where, you know, there's, it's much more complicated. However, the law's the law, um, so there could be ways to write, um, a scope for an OPM to limit, just meet the bare minimum of the, the state law, which we could discuss with Town Council if you like. But generally, the process is hiring the OPM, hiring the designer, and then moving, moving through together with the town on designing, permitting, and bidding and building the, uh, infrastructure.
Do you know of any town that's gone through the process of building a structure like this for either a THM, a THM problem, or another problem for that structure? I can, I can remember when we talked about a, a cobble type of building, and now we're talking a couple of million bucks plus.
Right.
What have other towns done in this circumstance when they're required by the state to build a building like this? We can't, this can't be the first time this has ever come around.
What's, yeah, what's frustrating for me is I wish there was some, um, understanding or, or it was broken down a little to different types of projects, because it sort of lumps everything in a million and a half dollars. I mean, I've built, I've built pump stations that are more expensive than this, that technically qualify bidding under chapter thirty, section thirty-nine M, which is, you know, which doesn't need file subbid, it doesn't need an OPM. So it's a little frustrating, and, and also, um, it's a pre-engineered building, it's not, it's not a brick and block structure, it's not.
Yeah.
It's, it's something that's engineered and designed to stand. I've had, you know, in all honesty, I won't name anybody, but I've, I've had some towns that have just gone through the process and have not. Have just done it, have done it, have not gone, I'm not going to discuss the legality of it, but just have done it through the designer.
Is there an appeal process?
We could, we could, um, ask the Attorney General. Uh, I had sent her an email. He kind of described the project a little bit without naming the town, and, um, she had said, yes, it qualifies as chapter one forty-nine. We could go back to her and just explain the process and try and say that we're trying to get this built as quickly as we can just due to the DEP's, uh, mandate, if you can call it a mandate. Uh, maybe that would help, um, but, you know, she may come back and say, sorry, you know, it's, the law's the law. So I guess if that's the case, it would then turn the discussion over to, do you have someone in town that you know could do it? Or if you don't, how far can we limit the scope of going out to bid for an OPM to minimize the role? So you don't spend a lot of money and you don't delay the schedule for this to get definitely.
If we wind up having to pay two point nine million dollars to get this done, what's the effect gonna be on, uh, the rate base?
Meaning if you add an OPM to that amount?
You gotta add an OPM and an architect.
Well, so OPM is either an architect, another engineer, or someone that's experienced in buildings. So you don't technically need an architect and.
Even architect, the first, the OPM's first job is to help you pick a designer.
A designer, could be an engineer, doesn't have to be an architect.
He's not gonna pick himself, though.
No, Ryan.
No, 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 I'm saying you don't need an architect for this type of, this type of building.
Okay.
We'd use a building.
Sorry, pre-. Be a builder.
Right.
The OPM isn't gonna design the building.
No.
So we get two people to pay.
No, Ryan.
Exactly, yeah, you have the OPM, you have the OPM to pay, and you have an engineer slash architect to pay, two, two separate people at the same time.
Right, so we, you were talking two point nine, right? Total cost?
Without the OPM.
Without the OPM.
Without the OPM.
Okay, so now we're over three million.
Right.
Invent a number and then tell me what the impact's gonna be on the rate base.
Wait a second. You know, you know as well as I do, that six hundred customers are not gonna pay to.
I, that's the point I was about to make.
Yeah, it has to be something like that.
Okay, so please.
That's the point I'm trying to make.
Okay, the bottom line here is that originally, the thought was, this is going back four years ago, that they wanted, DEP wanted that, the filter sites covered, right? Well, now, DEP is saying, oh, no, you're not just gonna cover them with a seventeen thousand dollar building, a cobble. They wanna build it, they wanna have it, they gotta have it heat heated, the whole nine yards. I mean, it's crazy, the worst part, the thing I think is really ridiculous is that even if the town says, yeah, we're gonna do this, even if the town says we're gonna do this, they want us to do something with the existing site until the building's built. That's a waste of taxpayers' money, a complete waste of taxpayers' money.
Is that, is that, um, included in that two million plus proposal?
OPM don't.
No, not the OPM, to do something to be a site immediately.
No, no.
Okay.
So, I mean, the task that's given to me was to come up with a cost to build for the future, so that's the two point nine million. I mean, we could get under the one point five million threshold if we wanted to not increase the filter size or just increase it for a certain amount of gallons, but, you know, the, I thought the process all along here was to try to look to the future, and that's what's really pushing us into that three million strategy.
So is there a way to get under the three million threshold to set off an OPM to do it in phases?
What's the line, what, under one point five?
Under one point five. Is there a way to do it in phases so we don't have to go forward with the OPM?
I think that would, um, whenever I've done permitting and, uh, work like that, if you were to go and permit the DEP just a, a building without controls, I mean, I think that alone, with the larger filters that you need, would be tricky if you were without money, and sometimes with permitting, uh, they're pretty smart, they'll always look, they don't want you to string projects and stack them, unless they're, um, for example, you could say, you have, you purchased just the filters separately on another contract, so say that's a half million dollars, and then you put a bid out for just the building, delivering the filters, which could be one point two million. You've done that before, we could ask Attorney General if that would be.
Could you do that?
We've done it before, but sometimes you actually wanna size equipment and know what to design the building from. So you go prepare the equipment under chapter thirty B, and then you bid the project under, um, chapter one forty-nine, the destruction of it. So, um, but the Attorney General may see that as one.
Um, so, uh, a follow-up question to that is, is that, um, this, in, to increase the size of the filters, that is to accommodate any future business that, that may come down? So I believe, just personally speaking, that that part of it should be borne on the whole town, because we all, we all want business, and we all welcome business, and we all see that to benefit the whole town. So if the, if that part of the project was born on the town part, and I'm just speaking for myself right now, just thinking outside the box, then again, would that be two separate projects? Or could, could the Attorney General see that as two separate projects? So the housing would be the one project, and the increase in the filtration system itself would be a separate project?
I think they, they would see it as a single construction contract that you say at the town would officially sign. It would be, and technically, you know, obviously, when you think a project's gonna be over a million and a half dollars, you're hiring an OPM way before you have any bid results, so it's what you estimate a project to be at the time of planning. It's sort of how the, how it goes with the regulation. So, I mean, if I was a bad engineer, I could say, yeah, the possible point four million. You go out to bid and it comes in at two million, but, you know, then again, you don't have the money at town meeting, but yet you skirt the OPM law, but that would be simply unful at night.
There's something that you guys found, well, I think we should bring this up right now, let's see you guys have all the facts. The EP, it has a concern, and I think it's sorry if you read the, during the last, the last meeting we had last month, so. The, we have six houses that are not getting filtered water from our filter site. Because the filter site is lower above them, okay? So, but what the town has done for a number of years is we have individual filters within these houses, and we pay, the town pays for the change of the filters, Kevin goes in and changes the filters and stuff. DEP, if you read the report that they sent to us with their mandates, they want us to put a pit in and have a central location for a filter to serve these six houses. Now, what, Kevin and I had a meeting, and I, I think it's probably, bring this up.
In general.
In general, we had a meeting with a, a company that's right on the Far River line, and we had a meeting with them earlier this week to find out if they would be able to lease us apostle of land at a dollar a year for ninety-nine years to put our filter site there, and that would be right at the Far River line, and that would capture all the households. They seem to be, the local people seem to be very on board with it, they were going through their copper people, okay? So we don't know where that stands, but that would be, in my opinion, the ideal place to put this filter site, because it captures the whole town, alright? The other thing is that, it, right now, the four inch filters, they're not even working for the people that are in existence, the businesses that we already have online. Now, if they were working, we wouldn't be putting in this emergency bypass valve at seventy-five thousand dollars, so there's no question that we need to have minimum of eight inch line to, to handle American, the other company that's coming in, and we gotta talk about they're gonna be growing, uh, tomatoes or something. I mean, we just don't have the volume that can pass through the filter.
If, if you open that, for a fire hydrant, we open a fire hydrant, not even a full flow, uh, to simulate a fire, our pressure drops to twenty-eight PSI.
Yeah, because we went on the testing.
You get more water out of your gut, out of your household faucet.
So that's the predicament that we're in here. So I just wanna make sure, because the board did not know that we had, that Kevin and I met with these people on Monday, and we're gonna probably see them on Wednesday for another issue, uh, pump stations, something. So they may have some information for us then, I don't know. So, that's what I, go ahead, Bob, Bob on the street next.
Ryan, just real quick, do you have a number separate, um, for the site work, building, the building itself, this lab, the heating, all the engineering basically, in the building, separate from upgrading the media and upgrading all the other valves and pumps?
Yeah, the, I have a, I have a detailed breakdown on my computer, but it has a, you can probably assume that the filters alone, to get, to physically purchase the filters and set them, is probably a cost of about six hundred thousand dollars, five to six hundred thousand, that's just the filters. The building cost is probably two to three hundred thousand dollars for the building, infrastructure erected.
Double, that includes construction, about two hundred thousand?
Yes, um, so that is almost half the cost of everything.
Where I'm getting to is more to Lisa's point, where if we could do it in phases, do the site work for the building in, or actually do the end, put the, upgrade the line maybe first, what you need to be, then put the building in over the top, and then phase three would be upgrade all your, your media, if that would be possible.
The only thing I was thinking when you were saying that, well, first, I think DEP would wanna see everything that, so they'd have to meet the mandate, you'd have to do in first phase, bottom line, I think, I didn't.
Right.
Whether you delay anything further. But the, one thing that would meet their mandate would be to keep the existing filters, even though it doesn't, we have a long-term goal, to keep the existing filters, put up all the structure around it, build the building so that a large enough door or removable roof that the, someone can come and drop in the filters, larger filters, at a later time if they're purchased, you know, a year or two from now separately. It's not ideal, you, at the time, you probably would pay twenty-five percent more for them in the end than you would if you did everything at once. But it would be a way to get all the infrastructure, get all the building done, get all the interior work, the chemical feed systems, the, uh, all the antelox, all the requirements of the EPM work. You'd have the valve done, so the valve could still pass the fire flow, meet the demands. We'd have to look and see how long that the, those filters could last, because, you know, during high periods of demand, you might be lowering the residual pressure in the system so low that you might have an issue even if one of the facilities starts using it for watering all the time, it could be an issue there, but.
Yeah, we get, we get a couple of facilities, they're gonna be using five thousand gallons of water a day, you know? We've gotta make sure if we're gonna keep those filters out for much longer, we've gotta make sure they're on a different water schedule.
What would be a one point five million, would that be under that one point five million?
Can I ask a question?
Where is it?
Sorry. I, I could do up another estimate to see what it would be if the, of filters were essentially taken out and the old infrastructure was built, either at the existing site or at the ISU site.
Yeah.
Good. That's pretty much it.
The crux, the crux of your question, it's not, it's not about having to phase the construction that we, because we wanna put off, paying it over the course of many years, it's trying to avoid what I believe might be unnecessary spending on an OPM, it's looking. So, the, and I, I was having this thought earlier when you mentioned this. Isn't it realistic, though, that we could put out for the vessels and the mediums, we could put that out as a separate bid item? I know it doesn't get us down below the one point five, what about all the electronics? Like the, the pump controls, the SCADA units and all that, we can't do that separate.
No, I, I would wanna do that, because there's issues with warranties and, you know, as soon as you take delivery, something like that.
Yep, yep.
You'd want the person ordering it, installing it to have, to own the equipment.
I agree, I agree, I just, it's, you know, I, I, it's unfortunate, how much this project costs?
Right, um, I mean, there's also potential ways that I could look at, I could look at the regulations, even talk to Town Council about, what's the bare minimum scope of work that OPM would have to be involved for that?
Right, definitely.
You'd weigh the option of, you know, they come aboard.
If you're gonna pay twenty-five percent more on the medium, and that price is gonna be higher than it would be to hire the OPM, then you're gonna hire the OPM, but if you're gonna save on that side of it, then if you could afford to, hire that.
And twenty-five percent is probably exaggerated, but I'm thinking, you know, say if it takes three years or two years after you go buy the filters, you know, this is five, five percent inflation, just off bottom line.
It's just the power, we use the building inspector.
I would say one site.
No, I don't think he's, I don't think he's gonna.
He could almost do it, pretty much more.
I don't see it as in two or three years, I see it as in a year.
Okay.
May I?
May I ask, if it's one project.
Go back forward right away?
We go backward right away.
We're talking about one project and, and doing it within a year. It's one project with two sources of funds.
Yeah, that's exactly.
That's where you're going to end up, right?
Say that again, Jack?
One project.
Yep.
Two sources of funds. Why phase it when you know what you're going to ultimately do is have the full project? Why not just go forward with it and, and.
I don't want to spend an extra hundred thousand dollars on an OPM if we don't need to.
Right, because.
Well, I got it, but you're going to have to do that. This, if, they're not, first of all, they're going to raise all sorts of questions about phasing it in order to try and get below that threshold. It's one project, and all said and done, it's one project.
Well, they're required, they're not requiring the bigger filters right now, correct? They're only requiring us to build.
To meet.
And, and close, and close, and it meets.
To meet the Article Six, critical chemical compliance.
However, you know what she's having to do.
But they're not, but they're not requiring that, we know that we're going to need that and then, look, we, American has been coming, coming, coming and it's finally here, so yeah, businesses take another year to even come on board. If, if we can look at to what the future of our capital stabilization is going to be in a year from now, we could take that money in a year from now, if, if most of the money is there, and pay that off. But right now, I think, for me, and I, just me speaking, I think that the first thing, the most important thing is, is to get DEP off of us right now and to do what needs to be done. But then also in the future, I definitely do, and I'm not talking about the three-year future right now, I'm talking about a short-term future, and then possibly that would get us below the one point five million dollars.
All right, I have a question. Where do we stand on do we want to move the facility if we have?
Oh, absolutely.
Oh, absolutely.
So in that case, you can't use the filters anymore, right? They're not going to be covered. They'll never go, they'll never go along with that. If we move that, if we put a new building down there in phases, they're going to say, what are you guys doing?
No.
You know what I'm trying, everyone.
We, you'd have to, you'd have to move the existing filters.
I was going to say, his point was, new building, take our existing filters, the four filters.
You need to down there.
That'd be absolutely out of our minds.
Right, that.
I know.
Come on, are you kidding me?
You're going to put four-inch lines in the feeder and then all of a sudden, a year later, you're going to put eight-inch line?
I don't want, the question was asking, can we phase this, how can we say a little bit of money?
Yeah, we could phase it if we left it in the same spot, but then we have to deal with another hundred and fifty thousand to put a, a filter bid in.
Yeah, I don't, listen, there's no easy answer.
Now, are we, listen, we should go see DEP again.
I'm awaiting response from DEP relatively.
Because we should go there and say, you tell us what exactly you're looking for, you know what I mean?
I was going to say, you know, we could do all we want and the DEP says, hey, it's got to be done by such and such a date.
Right.
Then, then we have no choice.
Well, they're going to, we have a choice, we could pay fines.
Yeah, well, yeah, they, yeah.
Because they've already, they've already said that.
You know, but we might be able, if we go with the plan that we're going to do it, that the DEP let us slide on covering the current filters.
That would make sense.
You know, we, we might be able to deal with them, they've given us a lot of breaks so far and, and we've been pretty good with them, so.
Ten years worth of break.
I don't think this board looks to put anything off, I think this board wants to get something done, we just want to do it the most efficiently we can.
Right.
Because we do have other projects, we're trying to do it at the same time, this was all of a sudden, three million dollars came out of nowhere.
Hit that land.
So that's why we're trying to save as much pot, get everything done, be in compliance, upgrade for the future, but also do it as economically as possible.
Right.
It's not, I don't think this board, anybody on this board is trying to be an obstructionist at all, I think it's just.
No, no, we don't, no.
We're trying to think of different ways to get this to go through as quick as possible.
I'm waiting to get confirmation back on a meeting possibly Thursday the twenty-seventh, waiting to get back. That was a date they shaped, they.
That's true, we really should meet, we have to meet with DEP and lay out our plans and if they agree with it, and see how we can stretch it.
We trying to go as fast as we can?
So, Brian, you're going to find out about the phasing and this and that early, and then you're going to talk to.
I'll look at the three, yeah, three options I see are, could we, we say if we purchase equipment under chapter thirty B and then bid a separate project under chapter one forty-nine? If that one forty-nine contract is one point, one nine nine nine.
We could even fund it under separate articles if that's what you implore us or.
Other one would be to delay the filters, I don't think that's really a great option because if we want to go to ISP, then there'd be no sense of paying to move the filters, roll the filters. And then the other thing I would want to look into was the minimum scope for an OPM. And then if that's the way you have to go, then we know, we have an answer.
Could somebody volunteer to be at OPM?
They wanted to volunteer?
They'd have to be an employee of the town, though, wouldn't they? Because if not, then you'd have to be a bid.
You have something to add, Jim?
Yeah, we do, somebody should sit on the water board that I was thinking about.
Right.
He sat on the water board, he thinks that's the peace, but he's not, no longer a member of the town, so.
Well, right.
No longer an employee of the town.
Right, right.
Well, you can craft an OPM, you can craft a RFP for an OPM to really boil down, or looking for someone specific on, you know, so you could have X number of years' experience in town, so instead of getting these huge companies, firms that are, you know, worldwide or Boston, you know, you'd probably get thirty responses. You could just limit it down to someone that you know, and hopefully they, they get it.
I'm not saying that he might be interested in it, but I'm, I'm just thinking, if we could do that, that would certainly save us.
We can't get a volunteer because we just went through the, through the regs.
Or even if we pay them, even if we pay them, nowhere near the rate for a hired in guy.
We just have to give them public pay cash, just like, use another way.
Would you be, will you be available if we go up and see DEP on, on the twenty-seventh?
March, on next week?
I think it's important to have Brian on board on the water.
Well, that way, he, he can hear it too, so there's nothing lost in conversation.
I'm free, I'm free in the morning, but I need to leave by, uh, open park.
Right, like I said, I haven't, I'll call, uh, Courtland again, well, to get confirmation. After that, you won't be around?
After?
The twenty-seventh?
Um, no, I'm around, uh.
Oh, okay, I thought you said you were going to the Cape.
Uh, for the twenty-seventh, in the afternoon.
Oh, you're working on the Cape.
Yeah.
All right, you guys are good?
You guys, Phil's the guy.
Well, there's nothing to do with that, you guys go down there and, all right, you guys certainly, anything, Ryan?
No, I think, I think I have my charge and I'll.
Thank you.
Thank you. Come back to you, I'll maybe somewhere else.
Sorry to make this difficult, but.
No, I, I.
No, it is, it is difficult, it is difficult.
We want to do everything we can, but we want to.
Yeah, no, I think it's great.
I want to make sure we guide you through the right process, too, so that you can come back.
All right, thank you very much, all right. Now, before she says, I forgot her.
For the hour at least.
You're funny.
I don't know, sit down and enjoy the fun. Kim, come on up, Kim Fields, I found a company. You're on.
Hi, you guys all got an email with a package of some financial policies and procedures. The auditors have had this meeting, let over a few years. They certainly understood that based on the resources available, it would take some time to try and implement. So this is kind of the start of the process. You have a policy for the overall financial management principles and there's also a section for bill paying and payroll, fraud and internal controls, cash management, including cash investments and cash reconciliation and receivables reconciliation. Those are basically the ones that myself and when Jeff Cannon was here, were able to kind of put together. So I am here to see if you've had a chance to look at them, if you have questions, if you wanted to discuss them, and if you're ready to go.
A, yes, I started looking at them, B, I have a lot of questions and I started marking mine up and seeing, no, I'm not ready to go on them.
Forty-one P is a stop, is what you're saying?
I just start.
Okay.
Nobody wants to know anything, Kim?
Something I don't want to do, anything, I think that, first, there's a lot of, lot of information in there, I want to make sure that it doesn't go against collective bargaining when we're talking about closing allowances. Right, I, there's a lot of stuff that I just want to make sure, so I started marking mine up and, um, we can go from there. I'll send them to you.
All right, sorry, Kim, so we don't take any action on Kim's request, all right?
Question on the water, can I ask a question, going back?
No. The chairman of our finance committee, of course.
Thank you. Who is being served by the water system, which business is in town? Is it like Stop and Shop?
Businesses and residents.
No, no, I know that, but.
We have two water systems.
Okay.
One comes out of New Bedford and there's no issues, there's, I think, in New Bedford, I think there's, on that line, I think there's about three, maybe three hundred customers, maybe slightly less.
Homes.
Yeah, well, I'm sure there might be one or two small businesses, okay? In a sauna, we have a total of like six hundred and sixty customers, total, total. So the difference between what's in East Freetown is what's being served by, by Far River. There's a lot of businesses being served and more businesses that are going to be served as they come in, off the Far River line. That's what we have.
So, but I'm trying to get a feel for what these businesses are, I mean, Stop and Shop would be one?
Yes, ISP is one.
Okay.
Your, as far as the line comes up, the line comes all the way up.
Of the water.
Where Kenny was saying, he says, it comes down Pleasant Street, down Water Street, and it goes all the way down South Main. That's, and, and when you go, when it comes up by, um, Borges's Garage, you know where Borges's Garage is? What is that, uh, what's the name of that road that goes up?
Ridge Hill.
Ridge Hill Road.
Yeah.
The line goes up Ridge Hill, it services, uh, the businesses up there, it's servicing Excel, they just put in their own eight-inch line off the main line and it goes up and I believe it, it's feeding the public too, where Republicans are going to have difficulty, it's going to feed American, a lot of businesses in the sauna.
So the Churchill and Banks, future property on Churchill and Banks is one of the things that, that would benefit if we had a larger line.
But there's no line going in there right now.
Right.
The reason I'm asking the question is, I know we can't burden homeowners with that kind of a bill, but the businesses should be able to absorb at least their fair share, I would hope.
There'll be some significant charges when businesses hook up entirely. And, and, and so far, in my short experience on the water department, the businesses pay for the line, the main line going up to their, their property, including, like, in, in Excel situation, they had to bring the line up all the way to their property, they put the bill for that.
Yeah, that's, that's normal, right.
And the rate payers aren't putting the bill. The one thing you got to realize is that if you, if you look back in time, okay, in East Freetown, there was only a few houses that were served by water and those were right near the New Bedford line. Then we had, and I'm going back, I'm showing my age, back maybe twenty years, twenty-five years ago, you had salt contamination on Middle Borough Road on the state highway, salt contamination on County Road, state highway. Then there was salt contamination on, in the, on Brayley Road. Right, in, in fact, that's why those lines were extended, because these people had salt contamination because of the state. In all those cases, it was the state. In fact, Freetown on Brayley Road, when the state put in the lines there, they were undersized. If you remember, we had a suit brought against the town by the Cape Verdean community and the town lost the suit and we had to put a pump station in and everything else. Okay, so that's why those people have water. In the sauna, you have the same situation. In the sauna, the water lines never came up until we had, was Hurricane Bob would have flooded out the sauna bay shores and anybody, you guys looked in the, you were bothered.
There was also gas contamination.
Then there was gas contamination up at the top of the hill of North Main Street. That's why all these people had to have water put in, so none of these people that have water asked for the water, they were forced into it because of the contamination. So it's, it's hard to say, you know, six hundred customers are going to foot the bill for this craziness.
No, that, I'm not saying that at all.
I know you're not, but I'm just saying.
Yeah.
I agree, that, there's a point in time, just like our tax rate, we have a business tax rate and a residential tax rate, do we have a commercial rate for water and a residential rate for water? And that's a question that is out there right now and, and one that we need to find the answer to.
We should figure it out.
The digester uses a lot, that, that digester uses a long one.
You know, it's, it's, it's a different, it's a different need for the businesses as opposed to.
I guess my point is, I think as a taxpayer, you don't mind subsidizing other homeowners because of everything you just said. But businesses that are using the water, you know, they're, they're for profit.
Right.
They should pay.
Absolutely.
And they shouldn't be subsidized by homeowners in Freetown.
That's true, you're absolutely right, and I agree a hundred percent.
The flip side of that is though, good, if we have businesses in, it does offset the tax rate. So there's a, there's two ways to look at it, and we can't attract business in if we can't offer them water, so that's another.
There's two kinds, different kinds of businesses, businesses that's, that's not using the water as part of their business. It's just, you know, this, this got triggered by air gas when they did their, their flow calculation with a fire situation and said we had, we have a low flow, flow situation, that's when this all really came about.
That's, well, that's when the seventy-five thousand dollar valve came about.
The valve came about.
But not the, the requirements by DEP.
No, not talking about that, not any of that, I'm talking about the flow rates. So, they're not using the water in their production of, their gases, they're using the water as, for fire, for fire safety. Where American is going to be sprinkling, I'm, I'm assuming they're going to be using the water.
Oh, yeah.
In, in the.
And Stop and Shop.
I don't know if they're going to be recycling, I don't know how that works, but.
Stop and Shop.
The, the, the digester for Stop and Shop, part of the process to break down the fuels, to make it into, down gas, is using the water, so.
And you've got Excel up there, they're using the water.
They supposedly recycling it.
Well, they, they have, they have.
They bring it in and they flow it back around.
But they still use the water, they would never put in an eight-inch line.
No, no, no.
They need it.
Because of Amazon and Stop and Shop, the tremendous tiffs they have, they're really not paying that fair share yet.
Well, I think Stop and Shop is getting to the point with.
Getting to.
They're a million a year.
Yeah.
No.
Yeah, Amazon has.
A five-year tip.
Yeah, and I think they got, what, what, they just opened up, so they got four and a half more years to go.
Right.
I don't think these companies are going.
Stop and Shop still has six to eight years.
No, they're not going.
Six to eight years?
Stop and Shop goes to twenty, twenty-two.
Yeah, but they're, they're.
They accelerate in, in two thousand.
One of the, the assesses are bad, they're at a higher, oh, that's right.
They're at sixty right now, I believe.
They're at sixty, I think, but they're, they're open.
They accelerate to ninety-six percent or something in another couple of years.
Okay.
All right, all right. The next thing, we're, we're already past seven o'clock and we've got a bunch of other things on the agenda. Should we, what do you guys want to do, you want us to take the departments right now so they don't all have to sit here?
Yeah.
Okay, let's talk with the departments and the finance committee and, and there's some things that are on the agenda. Like when Jackie comes up, there's a couple of agenda items for you.
We can take.
We can take that, and the same thing with Jessica, so let's start with, whoa, let's start with Jackie, the town clerk.
Do you want to start with Jessica where she's got a dead home?
Okay, Jessica, come on right up. Jessica is the town accountant, the town accountant, is the town treasurer and collector.
Do you guys want to come on to the deal or you want us to stay there?
Uh, we have, comment, isn't it?
Yeah. We have budgets, we have budgets.
Yeah, we have budgets, so come on up.
We're trying to fit this in so everybody doesn't have to stay here too long. All right, Jess.
If anybody wants to make a move.
You have something on the agenda?
No.
They have, are you ready to talk about your.
Bill three does.
Yeah, do you want to talk about that first before, before you talk about, that would be, all they have, they're opening it. I can hear. Well, they're opening, maybe we can talk about the municipal lease, okay? All right, Jessica, you have the, you have a request you to raise the fee for the municipal lease.
Yeah.
Just tell us quickly about it.
When I did, well, we started getting our checks from lawyers and things, the people back home, and we noticed a lot of the checks were fifty dollars and we're not, we have to call them, send back a check, get a new check. I said, we're not, do a little research for me and find out what everyone else is charging. We found that everyone else was charging fifty for years now and we're still charging the twenty-five, so I just wanted to bring that up to you guys and see if you guys wanted to raise that, make a motion to increase the municipal lease to fifty dollars as represented by the treasurer collector.
Uh, second with discussion.
All right, motion made, second with discussion, let's have a discussion.
Uh, I did notice though, some communities around us for municipal, I mean for, um, commercial.
Yeah.
MLCs have a, have a different rate. Does the board have appetite to have a separate rate or? Does the board have appetite to have a separate rate, or do you want to keep the same rate?
What's a commercial rate?
Most towns are 100, I think 150.
150 is what you're right. 150 residential.
Yeah.
150 commercial.
I'll, I'll make my motion.
Well, Ton was 150, Far River was 100, New Bedford was 100, Beaverton was 150.
So 50 and 100?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll make a motion to do 50 residential on your commercial side.
Okay.
Bushman's second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Let's talk about your budget.
Okay.
Okay.
It's as simple as that, okay.
All right. Can I give you guys the paperwork I gave us?
It's all in here, in our book.
Should be in our book.
You're very limited on what you can do because during early voting, even though they're voting at the, even though they're voting at the town hall, it's not considered a polling place. So that 150-foot rule that usually applies to the polling place that says that people can't come in with signs or buttons or things like that, don't apply to the town hall. So the Secretary of State's office says it does not stop us from creating a policy, and you could have that as a policy, both for absentee voting, where they vote at the town hall absentee as well as early voting, to prevent people from, say, standing in front of the town hall with signs or being inside, coming with stuff. So the Board of Registries did vote on that, and I'm gonna apologize, I had it in my envelope for you to sign tonight, and I'm asking that you would ratify it tonight and take a vote. But I took it out of my folder for the Board of Registries to sign it at the final voter registration the other night, so if the Board does vote on it, I will give it to Ally for another time for you to sign it. But I was wondering if the Board would be willing to take a vote and accept that policy for the town as the Board of Registries have. Oh, you, I don't, thank you.
Oh.
But the Board, no, because their signatures are on it, and I'd like yours to be on it the same, and then this way you would all have a coffee.
Okay.
But it is one of the same.
We can't use that one, right?
So it basically says that on town property, you know, that nobody could come in with political persuasion of any sort. So that would be like the parking law in front. And also, when the council on agent was used for early voting, it would apply to them also when the building is being used for early voting.
Makes sense.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Bushman's second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Public records access.
Yep, those guidelines there, by law, the new public access law requires all municipalities to have those rules and regulations in place and adopted by July 1st. Copelman and Page has presented to the clerks at our conferences and everything many training sessions, and they did give us a template to follow, and I did follow that template that they provided us, and I kind of tweaked it a little bit more to our, that would fit us better for the way we have the public access records officers set up, because not every town has it the same way. So I created that with that in mind, and again, I'm looking for the, to ratify it. If you wanted to have Copelman and Page look it over again, there shouldn't be any problem, because like I said, I did use the template. There was some changes I did make, though, like I said, to fit our town.
For times and stuff.
I was outside with that, so I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Bushman's second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So if you could sign that one, you should have the original one you have voted to sign.
I don't think I put the original one, because I don't think my reality is on that.
Oh, okay, that's all right. It's in the document. So she can have, give you the, yeah, at the same time, and that would be fine.
Maybe you'll have that ready on Wednesday, because then you go down there anyway, Wednesday I get a meeting, another meeting. Okay. All right. Now, the budget. Jackie, your budget.
Which one are you doing first? I've got three.
Well, I don't think we had anything on the other three, just on your budget.
The town clerk one?
Yep.
We want to see you up more often, you know?
Well, you know, the election one only goes by elections as well as the registrar one. What questions did you have, or did you want to address first?
Well, I'll, okay. Says town clerk pay increased 2580, and Cheryl promoted to assistant for $10,359.
Yeah, Cheryl has been here. When Cheryl came in as senior clerk, I had told her that, of course, I had in mind that at some point she would be promoted to assistant town clerk. And I was, felt a little bad for her when we had other promotions in town that were made assistants, and they weren't in their positions as long as she was. But I had told her that in my office, not only did she have to know the job, but as assistant town clerk, she was gonna be responsible for the same duties and responsibilities that the town is, the clerk is in my absence. And I wanted to ensure that she would know what those duties were and when to be able to do certain things and not do other things as town clerk if I wasn't there, whether it be on vacation or whatever. She has definitely gotten to that point, she's done a very good job. She picked up very quickly on the duties as senior clerk, the everyday duties of what needs to be done at the window, by phone and everything. And I believe she's at that point where she should be assistant town clerk, so I would want to give her that promotion in July. Like I said, she's done a very good job, so I think she'd make a very good assistant town clerk, and I don't think I'd have any worries if I wasn't in the office. So that is, that is...
I'm just gathering information.
And that is a position, it's currently in the CBA, correct?
Yeah, Diane, my, the former assistant that was there, she had gone the same route, was senior clerk, and was promoted to assistant town clerk when she was ready, so it's arguing the system, yeah. So she would come in at step three because she's been there as senior clerk and she's already at that. We're doing the same thing as the others were done, she wouldn't be coming in as step one?
What's the pay difference between step one, assistant versus step one, step cheese on or the step that is as a senior clerk?
Okay, step three would be the 2399 an hour, and then right now she's at... She would be, no, no, this is the older one. No, this is the newer one.
Jackie, right now she's at 1830.
She, okay. She's at 1830 right now.
And what is the step one treasurer, assistant rather?
Assistant seven, well, well, both steps, well, one, I guess, would be that step zero, 17, 79. The next step is 1959. So the 2399 is the third step. Which, if she was going up another step as senior clerk, she would be at the, what is it, the 1875 would be the next one, is that right? Or did you say her rate was now, I'm sorry?
1830.
It's, okay, because I'm looking at the next one.
1830, what was the next step?
1875.
Okay, what's the next step after that?
1885.
Eighty-five.
Yeah. That's after 10 years.
Yeah. Now, let me ask you a question, I just saw from my memory. What's the closest step to, on the new position that's equal to or above the 1885?
1959.
Well, I'm gonna just say, I'm just gonna make one point here. For her to be making less than the other assistant positions, and they were here last time, would not be fair.
That's a collective bargaining issue, and I say that we shouldn't talk about that right now.
We have to talk about it at some point, but we've had that issue.
And so that's all I'm gonna make that point, is I don't think it would be fair where she has been here longer. And they're all supposed to be within the same rates, because they all follow the same...
Yeah, I'm thinking back on how we did the other ones. I'm pretty sure that we went, now, correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm pretty sure, we took the step they were on, and I think we went up two steps, and when they got promoted, they had to be at, making at least that amount or higher than that two-step amount. So in that case, we put her at 1959 based on what I think we did.
That's not what they're doing right now. I'm not sure what you did, but I'm going according to what their rate was now and stuff, and that's what their rate was now. Kim, I don't know if you put that information to verify what I'm saying?
I believe they were just moved vertically in the same track that they were in.
Is that what we did? Just vertically in the same track? Uh huh. Okay.
So that would make sense.
Twenty-three.
All right, so that is why.
I'm just saying, okay, I understand.
And I understand you had questions on it, but that is, I just wanted to keep suit with all of them. So that, like I said, because she was here longer than they were. So that is why I put in at that rate there and for assistant town clerk. And then as far as my rate, I had made a note on there that I did put in an increase, requested 1,500 additional for the public records requests officer that I was made as extra duties to be put on. And I'm just gonna show you, this is the folder that we've had since January for public records requests, gradual, I don't put all these records together, so I don't do all that part of the work. We just had another one tonight, Ally got one tonight, right when we were leaving another public records request, so that, I've had 12 so far. Whether it's gonna get worse or better, I don't know, but this new public records law is causing a lot more work in some of the cities and all where it's a lot more, they actually created a whole new position part because it's so much work. You have to keep tabs on this stuff, and as you know, it's an important position, because if you don't keep tabs on the dates of when this stuff is due and everything, you're gonna, you could go to court and have to pay the lawyer's cost and everything there.
So part of the 2580 is 1,500 for?
For the master array, I did put that in.
The other 2% wage increase would have been for the town clerk position.
So I guess I'm losing here for a second. Who did you add for your salary?
The 2580.
Okay, and then in addition, or is that...
No.
That's on, yeah.
Okay.
So 1,500 for the public records plus a 2% raise.
Yeah, okay, I got it.
And I just would like to put in one comment. If you would look at the compensation plan that's in place for somebody that's been here 20 years, the rate that they're getting paid per hour and what my rate comes to, it's not close. I'm lower than that. So I don't feel like I'm asking for an excessive amount, and it is a bit of an increase, the 2580, and I'm not just basically going on that, I'm just letting you know it's not excessive. And also, the town clerk's positions, right now, that's not an excessive amount even based on what town clerk's getting paid for towns our size, for towns our sizes. So I just wanted to make those two points, but I wanted to give you the breakdown of what I was asking for. This early voting has caused a lot more work. For those, thankfully, it's not every year, but it's every state election, and we don't have early voting like the annual town election. It costs a lot more work. We're gonna have, have to have extra election workers and everything help out. I was putting 60 and 70 hours a week for the two weeks we had early voting, the week before and the week after, so for a whole month. And I'll tell you, I was at work till 9:00 at night a lot of...
And you don't get paid an extra for it?
No.
No, you only get seven.
We worked weekends and stuff too, because we offered it to the voters, but I'm just stating that as town clerk, and I don't think the Board disagrees with me that you think I have the knowledge and the professionalism of a town clerk, because you call me enough times to look sometimes for information that I might have. So I'm just saying, I'm trying to do the best I can at my job and stay trained and everything with all the changes of the laws and everything that go through. And as the chief election official for the town and everything too, I do the best I can with elections and everything also. So with that said, that was the rate increase on there. I don't think I really had anything else of a difference on my budget.
No, no, those are the only...
Those were the only changes.
Anybody want...
Yeah, just the $900, but we already knew that for the dog stuff.
Anybody want to cut her tape?
Does anybody have any questions?
No, I guess not. Jackie, I think you're on solid ground.
I did put in on the registers and election workers there for that 25 cents an hour increase, so I appreciate what happened. That was the only thing on those other two budgets.
Can I have a...
I have questions. Hi, Jackie.
Free the dog. All right, thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
One of the assessors.
He's one, isn't he?
They left.
Excuse me, come your way.
They came for lightning, I guess. They were late. The thing that led him to the patient. And then they left.
Oh, okay. All right.
I assume that's what they were doing.
When I saw them, I'm like, did we change our schedule? Okay.
You must be his chairman. Oh, no. You drew the shot straw then, right?
No, Sheila has had some minor surgery with the body and her eyes, and Sue is home, sick as it all coughing up.
We don't want to know that.
Terms that we don't know, and we didn't want to share them, I didn't change. So Michael and I are holding down the fort. I am sore throat.
Oh, God. Stay away.
No, it just started, I can hear it.
Hey, so... Figuring out your budget, and it looks like, hello, chair?
Go ahead, you're talking.
I was waiting for you to start.
All right, Lisa, start.
Thank you. So you're looking for a new staff person?
Yes, we are.
And the reasons for that is?
I have now been here 25 years, and as much as I threaten that I'll be here till I die, we have to start seriously thinking about one of these days I will retire. And I still have somebody in here who is well-trained, not just, you know, I answer the phone and I agree a customer, but how the work, the assessment part works. And so we would like to get somebody in for about 20 hours a week, all the time. Not, you know, two, when he comes in as a floater, does a good job, but we want somebody who is dedicated to the assessing work, learns how sales are analyzed and all the assessment work, which is... Access. You may, you're boss.
Thank you. Maybe here, but nowhere else. Also, Karen, being assistant assessor, is called upon to respond to taxpayer queries, which very often means that she needs to leave the office and go to view a property or view inside a property, which then leaves no coverage or spotty coverage in the office for people that may come in. Same thing for sick days and vacation days and so forth, it's difficult for us to have any coverage in the office, so that would help to alleviate issues as well.
So the 19604 represents a part-time clerk.
So the nineteen six oh four represents a part-time clerk, like twenty hours a week.
Step one, correct? New hire?
Well, I, no, probably not because the first bargaining issue you'd have is people from inside the union would want a bid. There's only one that I know of that is not at full, full schedule now. So I picked a, an hourly wage that's close to his. And now he's expressed an interest in working too.
So you started off by saying you don't retire, you threatened, but... What is your long-term goal?
Well, I'm not, I'm not sure exactly. I'm not sure, I was, when I started this job, a young lady who worked in Berkeley, North Berkeley, Bridgewater, came in that first week and ju, and said hello to me and congratulated me on my new job and said, "It will be three years before you have done the full cycle of everything that someone does in the assessor's office." And I sort of chuckled at it, "I'm good, I'll do it." Like I did to all of this. It was two cycles, two three-year rebound cycles before I really felt like I mean everything, everything needed to be done. So I think it's gonna take somebody a while. And it's not just teaching them how to use the phone, I mean, anybody can do that. And all of our people are qualified enough to do that and do some releases. But I want them to learn how to do the value, how to do the phasers. It's more than just...
Yeah, this, this scheduling and timelines and the dates we have to get them, so many things. There's a lot to it and it's good to have somebody else that can help with that continuity.
You know, let's think about this again. Let's say something happened to Karen after the bid. Gee, I wonder where we would be without anybody trained in the assessor's office. I guess the assessors would have to take a day off, a week from their regular jobs and come in and cover. Couldn't do that, couldn't you?
You'd be in tough shape, yeah.
You're darn right.
We used to have a little more latitude when I had retired. Most of my people retired. Because they had the, they had that luxury to be able to come in and work with me for a day if I had reports to get ready for the D O R. But I have a younger board now and they all have to work. They all have obligations. So getting someone starting to really learn...
Good job.
We went through this with the tax clerk slash treasurer. And luckily we got through it. We had somebody that had the education of, that was working in there as a senior clerk. She has no money, so, I mean, I think it's proven that we at least, as a town, consider having, you can't run these offices with one person. It's, it's crazy, because something can happen. That's just my take on it, my last take on it, my last take.
You're nineteen six oh four, what step, you use a senior clerk, I'm sure.
Eighteen seventy-five, or eighteen seventeen, seventy-five, eighty-five? Eighteen eighty-five, I think it is.
Eighteen eighty-five, step three, according to what Jackie just told us. They must be on the same line.
Assistant clerk. Eighteen, step four is eighteen seventy-five. And step five, and step five is eighteen eighty-five. Down in the corner of my notes, I had eighteen eighty-five, so I must have used that.
So it's a step five.
Boy, if it's an internal hire.
If it's an internal hire. But that's somebody that's been here for a while. Is that realistic, the person you thought?
Person knows, expressed the interest, the person, yeah, it is.
Are we good with the assessors?
You saw the other little correction on the, on the budget when I made last year's budget. I'm gonna have to come and ask you guys for sixty-three dollars to answer from one of my budgets to another. When I wrote down my chairman's, it's a terrible way, you know, chairman? She's giving sixty-three dollars short. I'll have to collect hands for her.
What's your iPad, twelve twenty?
The board has iPads for doing inspections. The service, we pay them, like the service contract every month is forty dollars per... So if I take money away from some of my supplies, I still...
So you're doing wireless though, so they can do their reports right in the field?
And the others, my contract, we're interested.
You good? I guess you guys made it through. I heard say they're like coming back, so that's a good thing.
You know where we are.
Yeah.
You know where to find us.
All right.
Have a great night.
Personnel board. Do you wanna make a comment? Oh, we got, that's something else. You know, I, I've been sitting here thinking about, and I wanna go back and revisit. I wanna comment on Kim's, on Kim's rules and her financial policies. She's been working on those for quite a long time. And, you know, we've been, the town has been told by the auditors year after year that we didn't have policies and procedures. So I think we really should consider, you know, don't, don't, I don't, I don't wanna see this lady go through all this work, hard work and everything. And, you know, I think we should reconsider the fact of adopting this stuff. It's crazy to have somebody put in that much time and, and, you know, okay, we'll look at it again. Sometimes those things don't happen, we don't look at things again. Just my editorial comment.
I, I'd like to break it down a little bit more, though, Paul, and, and study it a little better to see. And not saying on my own, I'm saying with Kim and see exactly what's in there. Because, like I said, it's forty-seven, forty, whatever it was, forty-seven pages.
Kind of like the police rules and regulations.
And I'm not saying she did all the hard work, because obviously she put all this together.
Kind of like the police rules and regulations, they go on and on.
And they keep adding.
All right.
I've been, I've been here two tours of duty, three years in between. And we were working on it in that first tour.
Yes, we were. We had a financial management team that included the town accountant, the treasurer collector, yourself. So there was a whole committee that worked on it and then looked at everything and brought it back down to the board of selectmen after it went through all these renditions. So this is really the first time I've had a chance to sink my teeth into it. And I, and before we go and adopt something and wanna change it in another two weeks from now, I just wanna make sure, especially the collective bargaining point. I just wanna make sure that...
I think it's important for you to take the time to review it.
Yeah.
You wanna reschedule?
Yeah, I, I don't care if we put it on for the next, well, it won't, it can't be for the next meeting.
Not next one, one after.
The one right after that.
All right, two meetings up.
So that, eighteenth, is that what it is?
Cause the next one is the...
The next one is the day after elections.
Keep that a little light meeting.
All right, we went by one thing that, that's near and dear to Jack's heart. Discuss new telephone systems.
I've given you, I've given you the information and the comments from Lisa and the fire and, and from Kim from general government side. What's your pleasure? Police system is twenty years old. And it's the most critical communication system we have, obviously.
Wait, whoa, 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 stop. It has nothing to do with nine-one-one.
Well, I know that.
Okay.
I know, because they do a lot more on the phone system than just...
No, is this a computer-based system?
Yes.
And that's gonna include all the software and...
Yeah.
Not just the hardware of the phones, the jacks, all that stuff? So it'll include the software, the support? Is support included that too?
Yes.
Is there a monthly fee?
Yes.
Not included?
Yeah.
Well, it's only included, you buy it, then there's a monthly fee there.
There's a yearly fee, yeah, right. Now, there was another, one of the other comments that were made, one of the suggestions that was made that had some possible merit is, was made by the fire chief. The suggestion that he made, that he made as an alternative, wanna wait until the new station is complete.
Well, I would think...
That's a good idea.
I would think that part of that is gonna be included in that.
Yeah, it's also gonna be scalable to a new station if we do something early. But it has, it might be a delay between this town meeting and that new station. We're going for three million for a water department. Including another, another seven million on top of that, that...
Ready to decide, you wanna just put it on the back burner?
I can't find it.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking for too.
It's the next, last item on the first page.
What's the total cost, Jack?
It's the last item.
What's the total cost, Jack? That's the important stuff.
I don't know.
It was a separate email from, it was a separate email from Jack because it was a whole packet from...
So it's not in the packet?
Yeah, no, it was a whole packet.
So the cost was...
I think it was sixty-one total, wasn't it? Jack? Sixty-two, five thirty.
All right, let's put it on to the next meeting. There you go.
The eighteenth, you mean, right?
No, let's put it on the fourth.
With the new one, a new person not getting a package though? A new person will...
I'm waiting for a reaction.
Sure takes the fun out of it, you know?
Come on, I'm waiting for a reaction from Lisa.
I didn't give you one though.
I know.
It's too late.
Too much fun, okay. All right, that's, that's on for the next, for the eighteenth. All right, personnel board. You're on, Lisa.
Make a motion to appoint Stephen Chandler to the cultural council effective March twentieth, twenty seventeen.
I'll make that motion.
Please skip the meeting that...
We'll get to that.
On favor?
Aye. I made the motion, okay. Now, we're gonna go back and approve the minutes. Where are they? The minutes for the February twenty-first, two thousand seventeen board of selectmen meeting?
There was a change, I had a correction in the minutes. The, one of the numbers, the, one of the figures was wrong. I can't find it right now, it was, I think it referenced twenty-six thousand, it should have been twenty-sixty thousand when we're talking about, that's the joint meeting, correct?
Yes.
With the joint meeting. About what the school wanted, what Mr. Powderly's recommendation was at the two-point-five percent. And I wanted to clarify, the minutes here say twenty-six, twenty thousand here, I found it here. Working together is certainly better than working apart. Selectmen Joe says twenty thousand, six seventy-four times two percent, then split by the formula. It's not twenty thousand, two sixty-four, I think the, the comma's in the wrong place. They don't have the actual number in front of me, but that's it.
Did the motion approve that, the correction?
No, I had one too. Also added that I read an email from Jonathan Silasine explaining that the B O S can put restrictions on their license. And I asked Mockrich, does that include monitoring wells?
That's, that's on Excel, right?
On Excel.
All right, now, you wanna, now make a motion?
With those corrections.
Second.
Motion made in second with the corrections that were just discussed, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, now, let's see. Next board of selectmen meeting is on April fourth, that's the day after the election. Usually the new incoming select person. And will they usually redo the board on who's gonna be chairman and personnel board and board of health? I did bypass board of health because I didn't see anything next to it. But Mr. Joe says, is there anything for board of health? And no, there you go. I wanna make sure he said that, there you, all right. And after that, the next meeting of the board of selectmen is April eighteenth and Monday, May first.
May first?
All right. Earlier when I, I told everybody to vote, please go out and vote on April third. I, I mentioned three people and one person was here and I think she got a shot of the person. One of the other candidates is right here, Joel Pacheco. You wanna get a picture of him? So people know who he is, he's, he's one of the other people that are running for select. All right, so we had two of them here.
See in the back of my head a thousand times.
Okay, what else can we have? Does anybody wanna go into executive session regarding bargaining with highway clerical library union regarding the grievance that we had that we discussed before? Yes? Okay, all right, I'm gonna read this. Mass Journal of Law, chapter thirty A, section forty-one eighty-three, to discuss strategies we expect to collect the bargaining with the highway clerical library union. Because in my opinion, we should not be discussing this in open session or we'd have a detrimental effect on our position in the bargaining. We're gonna be talking about a grievance that was filed by that, by that union. Is there a motion?
Are we gonna be returning to open session?
Uh, do we wanna return to open session? We need to, we need to vote on in open session if we make a decision. Let's, let's...
No, no, we don't.
Sure.
I'm positive.
Okay, then we won't return to open session.
Okay, I'll make the motion.
Motion, second? Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, Mr. Joe's?
Yes.
Mr. Pacheco?
Yes.
Mr. Sadik, yes. Okay, we shouldn't be long.